Welcome back to the second half of our July 15, 2019 council meeting. I would call the meeting to order after our recess. I would open for the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity that anybody in the community has come forward and speak to council on any matter that as long as it isn't the subject of a public hearing. So if you're here for either of the public hearings, we'll have a time for that following this brief interlude. Is there anybody that'd like to come forward and address council? I don't see anybody rushing the stage as it were. So we'll move on into our public hearings and we'll move to item 14.1 bylaw C 1260-106, a rezoning from combined residential to general residential. I'd call this public hearing to order and look to administration for an introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks, Ms. Downing.
Administration has received an application to amend the land use bylaw in order to re-designate the subject property from combined residential to general residential. The subject property is in the Westgate East neighborhood, north of Westgate Shopping Center and east of 116th Street. The neighborhood is primarily residential with a commercial strip along 116th Street. 114 C Street is partially developed with semi-detached dwellings on both sides of the streets, and the area to the north and west are being developed as low-density residential lots. The low-density residential area will contain a mix of single-detached and semi-detached dwellings. The lot is part of a subdivision that was registered on March 1, 2019. Prior to subdivision, the area was zoned RC, combined residential. The minimum housing density permitted in this district is two units, which is either a semi-detached dwelling or a duplex. The applicant, a home builder who purchased the lot from the developer, is requesting this rezoning primarily due to the costs associated with constructing a development with that would conform with the RC district. In order to meet safety code regulations, the services would need to be upgraded for the additional dwellings. The applicant is proposing to construct a single-detached dwelling with a secondary suite. This is a permitted use in the RC district, RG district, and this would not require an upgrade to the services. The proposed land use bylaw amendment would rezon the property from RC to RG. The current RC combined residential district is intended to provide for a mix of residential dwellings ranging from two units to 12 units. The proposed RG, general residential district, is primarily for single-detached and semi-detached dwellings. Single-detached homes may contain a secondary suite, provided that they meet all conditions of the land use bylaw. The proposed amendments were advertised in the newspaper for two consecutive weeks, posted on the city website and the planning and development public hearing page, and notice was placed on the subject property and letters were sent to the adjacent property owners. Administration has not received any comments in response to any of the notifications. Administration has considered the proposed rezoning in the context of the adjacent land uses, as well as the city's overall residential growth objectives to create mixed-use densities in new neighborhoods. The pattern of development and zoning in the area is consistent with the proposed use. The proposed use is not a significant deviation from those uses permitted under the current zoning. For these reasons, administration recommends that council give bylaw C 1260-106 three readings. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Ms. Downing. Any questions for administration at this stage? I don't see anybody in the queue. Ms. Downing, I just had one question with regard to the secondary suite. So if the zoning goes through, would there be any other hurdles the applicant would have to clear in order to be able to get approval for the secondary suite? Would there be any in terms of the spacing to other secondary suites or anything like that?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The development permitting department has reviewed the application and it conforms with the land use bylaw.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor O'Toole?
Just another question regarding the possible house going there. Would there be a limitation on height restrictions or overall lot width, lot size compared to the house?
The limitations fall within the guidelines for single-detached dwellings. So there are limitations in the land use bylaw. Forty percent, forty-five percent of the property can contain the house and the two-story or I'm not sure exactly how many feet, but there is a height limitation and lot coverage limitations.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Councilor O'Toole. I don't see anybody else in the queue with questions for administration at this stage. And that being the case, then we'd go to the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. This is the opportunity for anybody who wish to speak to the application to come forward. If the applicant is here and wishes to speak, now would be the time to come and speak in support of the application. Might as well take your opportunity. Only get to be famous a few times, right? So welcome. If you'd just have a seat, introduce yourself for the minutes and yeah, welcome.
I'm Jordan Gregson with Grand Belt Homes. I'm just here to answer any further questions. We've already had a couple of these single-family dwellings go in and the secondary suites in the basement. I do have plans if anybody wants to see them.
If you'd like to show them, you absolutely can. There's that little plastic that's on the table.
Okay.
Put it down there. Our overhead camera will be able to pick it up.
Bigger paper.
Well, even if you just set it down, they'll be able to zoom in on it and everybody gets it wrong the first time.
You guys make it very nerve-wracking.
I know that you know at least a few of us and so it's...
Yeah. This is, this is the main floor, or sorry, the basement suite. And there's two separate... So the reason that I'm proposing this is because the lot actually that you can see in the map that you guys were given, I think it was just an oversight and planning possibly because it's not wide enough to do a side-by-side duplex, which is what's proposed there. What I've given is essentially by all means an up-down duplex, but it's something that the city will pass if it ever gets to building stage. From what I've heard from building inspectors, you can't actually build an up-down and sell them separately to me codes, so. And there's only one service going there, so.
Any other questions for the delegation? I don't see anybody ringing in, and so it looks like you're off the hook, Jordan. Thanks very much for being here to answer any questions council might have had though. Certainly appreciate that. I'll ask if there's anybody else that wishes to speak to this application, anybody in opposition to the application? I don't see anybody coming forward. And so if there aren't any other questions for administration, council, then we'll close the public hearing. Thanks very much, Mr. Gregson here. Councilor Minhaus, do you have a question for administration or business arising? Okay, absolutely. So I'll close the public hearing and we'll move to you, Councilor Minhaus.
Thank you, Mayor Will Given. I'll move the council give the first reading to bylaw C 1260-106 being amended as to land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councilor Minhaus. So motion for first reading. There's no discussion or debate on first reading. Please vote. Doing my math. There we go. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Minhaus?
Thank you, Mayor Given, and give the second reading to bylaws C 1260-106.
Thanks very much, Councilor Minhaus. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Not seeing anybody ringing in, then I'll call for the vote on second reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Minhaus?
Can I have a third reading of bylaw C 1260-106 at this time in this meeting?
Thanks very much. So this is a motion to have third and final reading here this evening. If this motion doesn't pass unanimously, then the third and final reading would have to come back at our next council meeting, which I would remind council is actually nearly a month away because of our council break where we don't have any regularly scheduled council meetings. Is there any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading here this evening? And seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries, so we can have and carries unanimously, so we can have third and final reading. Councilor Minhaus?
Give the third reading to the bylaw C 1260-106 being amended to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councilor Minhaus. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing none, again, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well, and that's all of our business related to bylaw C 1260-106. We'll move on now to item 14.2, bylaw C 1260-107, land use bylaw amendment regarding paving securities. Mr. Wright?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Given and members of the city council. So this is a proposed amendment to the land use bylaw specifically section 70, which relates to parking and paving for non-residential uses. So currently in the land use bylaw, there's a requirement that when a permit is issued, that a letter of intent is required to confirm that paving will be completed by September the 30th of the same year, or that basically paving securities are required thereafter. So the proposed amendment is looking to allow a greater timeframe for developers to complete onsite paving for projects prior to the need to submit securities to the city. This amendment, if adopted by council, would allow developers to complete paving prior to building occupancy, and if not completed at that time, then the developer would pay the required securities to the city to allow building occupancy to go forward. Just in terms of a bit of background here, that certainly looking to promote sort of development, large-scale projects, commercial industrial, we've seen some examples that have come up that securities are in the region, you know, for the paving, for the, this is onsite paving, $795,000 for a project. So how that works is that it's basically the developer is securing, confirming those funds are available, as well as paying that money to actually undertake the paving. So as I mentioned earlier, that basically it's either a letter of credit or certified check for 100% of the paving costs if not completed by September of the year of permit approval. This can prove challenging for developers because if they're taking out permits in the summertime, or there's a large-scale project that may run over a couple of years, then the securities are required to be paid at that time, sort of after September 30th. Administration considers that the proposed amendment would then sort of not tie up finances and release that to be available to developers to have funds for additional projects. The risk associated with this is to say that to receive the securities, then we know we have them to actually sort of use them if necessary to complete the paving. Other mechanisms are available to ensure the paving is completed. These include issuance of an enforcement order, penalty fines, and a stop order. So council may recall with reference to the enforcement order to a stop order, a stop order basically will stop the business from operating or the use from operating on the site. The enforcement order can focus on the particular, so if the paving isn't completed, we can focus on that with an enforcement order to see that it's undertaken, and if it's not, the city could still go onto the property to complete the paving, and then the costs would be added to the tax roll of the property. So as indicated, just with this amendment, if adopted, in a worst-case situation, if a developer doesn't pay paving securities prior to occupancy, administration would have the authority to prevent occupancy until the building is, oh, sorry, the paving is completed. For stakeholder engagement, the public hearing was advertised for two consecutive weeks in the local newspaper and on the city's website. Grand Prairie Development Institute and Home Builders Association were notified of the bylaw. If this is adopted, it will be a citywide bylaw. That's why sort of individual property owners weren't notified. The Urban Development Institute has provided a letter of support for the proposed amendment with respect to home builders, which generally for single-detached, semi-detached duplex developments, they would not be impacted by this amendment in either way because the city does not require paving securities for these developments. So in summary, the amendment would benefit developers, particularly on larger projects, and provide an option for completion of the onsite paving. Few situations previously that we've experienced where paving hasn't been completed for new development or building expansions, and just to clarify that this amendment would only relate to paving requirements on private property. It would not change the security requirements for landscaping or paving through servicing agreements such as roads and sidewalks to serve a subdivision. So recommendation is that council gives first, second, and third final reading to adopt bylaw C 1260-107. And if you've got any questions?
Great. Thanks very much, Mr. Wright. Any questions for administration at this time? Councilor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Just a question. I'm just kind of curious, what's in researching this? Was there any look at what the county charges for securities or just to know what the county would be looking at for securities on something like this?
Mayor Given, Councilor Palat, we did contact the county. Our understanding is that they used to charge securities and they no longer do, and basically they would just issue a stop order if the paving wasn't completed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Wright. Any other questions for administration? Ms. Wright, I had one. Does this, does this ability carry over from owner to owner? And I was trying to think about risk to the city, and in the unlikely scenario that a builder or developer didn't complete a project and went into bankruptcy, what would happen then? Would the city still have the ability to enforce the paving to a new owner?
Mayor Given, yes, it would be tied to the land, so sort of regardless of the owner, it's tied to the land.
Sure. So if a development was sold through the courts and changed hands and came up in somebody else's, we'd still have the same ability to require the paving before occupancy?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions for administration? Seeing none, then I'll ask if there's anybody in attendance this evening to speak in support of the proposed amendments? Anybody here to speak in support of the proposed amendments? Do you want another shot, Mr. Gregson? So much fun last time. I don't see anybody coming forward to speak in support. Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? In fact, I don't see anybody here at all. So council, one last opportunity for questions for administration? And seeing none, then I would close the public hearing and we'll move on to business arising. Somebody care to make our first motion? Councilor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C-1260-107 being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thiessen. No discussion or debate on first reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C-1260-107.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on second reading? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council have third reading of bylaw C-1260-107 at this meeting.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate as to the merits of having third and final reading here this evening? Seeing none, then I would remind council that this motion must pass unanimously in order for us to carry on. Please vote. Thank you. Motion does carry unanimously. Councilor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give third reading to bylaw C-1260-107 being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Councilor Thiessen. One last opportunity, council. Any discussion or debate on this item? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Thank you. That handles all of our business related to 1260-107, and that handles all of our public hearing business. We had no other delegations this evening, and so we'll go right into council member reports and council. I apologize, I didn't ask ahead of time, still getting used to our new format, but so maybe we'll start with external agencies and committees. Councilor Thiessen, any to report? Councilor Palat, any to report? Any extras? Councilor Minhaus? Council Clayton? Council O'Toole? Nobody? Okay. Then we'll go the opposite way and start with Councilor Bressi and come back around for council member reports.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Two highlights for me was one of camp for newcomers to Canada children was here at City Hall visiting to visit council chambers here, a bit of what council did. It's a pleasure to be joined by Councilor Thiessen and Councilor Minhaus to tell these kids a little bit about what we do here in these chambers. Highlight for me was we ran a mock city council meeting about a potential skate park, and I've shared some stories about how they channeled the seat they were in. My other favorite thing was every time a camera would go to a kid, they'd hide under their desk. It reminded me of my very first council meeting, how terrifying it can be looking at your face six feet high when you're having a bad hair day. And so that was a fun day for me. Another one was I got to go on a tour of the new bandage pause facility, and it was great scenes, well, it was really sad, but also really great seeing some of the animals there. But I just love seeing there was a real need in our community and a really great group stepped up to take care of it, and it was encouraging to see, and that's one of the reasons I love the city, because people aren't sitting there waiting for government to solve problems, they're out there solving themselves and doing good things for this region. So that was a real highlight for me.
Thanks very much, Councilor Bressi. Councilor O'Toole?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. It was actually a slower period of two weeks than it was the previous six weeks that I'd been deputy mayor, but I did attend a, an open house down in southern Alberta this last week called Seaglau. It's a new wave of recycling some of the plastics and wood products that are abundant in this province and nation and actually in the entire world. And they've got to a point now where they're producing a product and selling it, and so they were actually eyeing up the Grand Prairie area and actually trying to build something like this in the city of Grand Prairie's new area. The whole building that's, that we were at was probably about one acre big where the structure was, and then they would have more need for storage facilities and driveways and that, but it would definitely fit into a small community, large community, and yeah, I'm thinking we're going to hear a lot more of it in the near future. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. Councilor Clayton?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Between taking a brief break with my family, I had an opportunity to be in Calgary during the first week of stampede. During that time, I was invited to various sort of pancake breakfasts, barbecues, hospitality events, and many, ran into many numerous municipality, municipal leaders and, and corporate people. It was definitely a great opportunity to sort of share what's happening in Grand Prairie. And it, at that time, I also realized, you know, how important tourism is to a municipality, and until you're really in the heat of stampede, you don't realize what that event does for that community. So, you know, kudos to fellow municipal leaders in Calgary, but also to all the corporate leaders that take on the events during stampede. It's, it's quite an undertaking and they do a great job, and that city is, is flying during those 12 days. So it's, it's really something I encourage people to visit if they haven't been there lately. It's changed, and I hadn't been there in about three years, and it's, it's a great event. They do a really good job. So thanks.
Thanks, Council Clayton. Councilor Minhaus?
Thank you, Mayor Will Given. Yeah, it's kind of a slow, but we went there's few places. Couple things, the interesting part was for me this week, met Max Bernier, the PPC, P P People Party Canada, and I was, went to his speech to listen, and then it was a lunch. I'm a bit, kind of get very impressed with what his ideas and thinking was because I know he was PC before, but he seemed like bringing a more dealing like immigration was his big thing, and then another one was the farm subsidy, like eggs and cows where the mostly farmer don't get subsidy, but those area they do the honey and stuff, and then he, I was quite impressed to listening his speech and talked to him a few minutes later. I feel quite confident. I was very surprised there how many people came. There was in a Palm Ryan, there was about 150 people too, listening his things, and people were quite happy to listen to ideas, what we need to change in Canada. And the second thing, I met the guy who came to our church, his daughter was in our college. His name is Erwin Singh, which is, I heard his father's name. He was a big lumber guy in BC, and he came in 1927 in Canada, and he was a big developer for the lumber. And his, that's his son, making long story short, and he's doing a lot of thing, he done a lot of urea. End up talking to him, he came to our church and then sitting there, then he, we talk about the church, we need to expand about six temple, I would say, not church, to expand it, and then start talking, he can spend million dollar to five million dollar if you want to. I was, you know, just concerned a person don't know and think there, but then he start talking, then I knew the people he knew. So we come kind of close, and we're talking about nautical plant here, and he had a lot of experience in urea back in Russia and all of the, in Europe, lots of places he has done the business. So end up we talking to Mark Turner, who's president for the nautical, and he's going to meet in 23rd. It was kind of very interesting. I met two, three time away in Drysdale, met him with him, and it seems like if he does it, that'll be good investment to grant pay, he probably billing to invest $300 million to this area. That was a very good, interesting talk for me that week. That's about it. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Minhaus. Councilor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I think my highlight was I had met with him several times, once with Council Bressi, but was meeting with Jared Gossen from St. Lawrence Center and just, you know, it's one of those things you appreciate, and you drive by, you see the tents outside of City Hall, you see what's going on around Rotary House, but I hadn't had a chance to connect with him for a while and just have a one-on-one, and it just reminds me of just how many people like that are in the trenches in the community doing some, some, not the funnest work, I would say, that, you know, some, some of the results maybe aren't the easiest from day to day, but I just really appreciated what Jared does for the community and just, just nice to spend some time with him as a reminder to me that I need to maybe reach out and spend some more time with people in this space. So that was definitely my highlight.
Thanks, Councilor Palat. Councilor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yeah, it was actually quite a slow week, so I'm, I got a small report, but I'm just going to stick to what hasn't been talked about in the Community Advisory Board on Housing Annual Report at Theresa Sargent Hall this, this past week on Friday was excellent. Councilor O'Toole gave greetings as deputy mayor, and I think many members of council were around there, and okay, I saw Council Bressi in the house. I think I saw Council Minhaus in the house, and yeah, and myself, and Council Reed Palat wasn't there, unfortunately. I thought I might have seen him. I might have saw him somewhere else, but I just wanted to tip my hat to that because I was at the first Community Advisory Board on Housing Annual Meeting, and back then it was maybe, well, you say 10, but to me it seemed more like 25, the first meeting, and it was all people that were just specifically connected to the cities or the EDs of different organizations. To see Theresa Sargent Hall full and a lot of people from around the community representing different service agencies, representing concerned members of the community, council, other government people, as well as, you know, residents, gave me a lot of heart and a lot of hope that, you know, housing and homelessness is a big priority in our community, not just for the members sitting around this table or the people who work in the industry, but everyone who was in that room knows that we're all impacted by the state of homelessness and not having housing for people in our community. So that gave me good impetus. And finally, a lot of coffee meetings, a lot of meeting meetings, especially with the not-for-profit groups this last few weeks. I had to fill out my schedule somehow. I also got some family time, but my absolute highlight was seeing the two children sit in Councilor Palat's seat during the Center for Newcomers tour, because when Council Bressi says that they literally challenged or channeled the spirit of the person sitting in the chair, they totally did, and this, this kid was hard on developing, he was hard on, on raising taxes, and he wasn't given anything to say yes. He was all, no, 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 unless we can find a cheaper way and a better way to build it, and it was just awesome. I was laughing, and as much as Council Bressi and I tried to control him from administration tables and from the mayor's chair, he wasn't budging an inch. So it was great, and it was definitely a highlight of all the things that I did this last two weeks. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Thiessen. Really briefly, I had the opportunity to participate in an all-day conference call for the Minister's Emergency Opiate Response Commission. Was pleased to participate in that first meeting since the provincial election, certainly as the commission can, looks to continue its work. And with Councilor Minhaus and some other members of city administration participated in a meeting of the ICF Negotiating Committee with the County of Grand Prairie earlier this week, last week, sorry, rather, and also attended the Bandage Pause Open House that was mentioned by Council Bressi. Certainly appreciated the opportunity to see the community coming together to really move that, that forward, and was great to see that that shared space that was developed between the city and the county so long ago is, continues to be useful in our community. And then finally, last Friday, had a meeting of the Tri-Municipal Industrial Project Steering Committee with the County of Grand Prairie and the MD of Greenview, and continue to see that move forward through the ASP. see that move forward through the ASP stage and on to future development. And so with that, I think we'll call our meeting adjourned.